Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All this meeting to order reconvene or reconvene recess from our last one. Welcome everybody to the place here. Project purpose for this is to present his recommended budget and we have that first on the agenda so, Mr. Mayor, you're up. Is everybody's screens working there? Should be. Should be on your screens. Mr. Chairman and Board, thank you. I'm honored to come here tonight and present the fiscal year 1516 budget. And I was thinking in the months that we've been putting this budget together, not only are we looking forward at what we're going to accomplish in the coming fiscal year, it gives us a chance to look back at some of the things that we've been able to accomplish this year. And some of the items we've accomplished, when you look at the list, they've been no small feat. We completed a revaluation in-house. That's 44,000 parcels of property that our tax office assessed and appraised and then right now is finishing up the appeals process with Board of E and R. We estimate by keeping this reappraisal in-house that that's over a million dollars. Aside from completing the revaluation, we organized a health insurance committee and that committee was tasked with taking a look at our health insurance plan which was failing. It had declined, the net position in that fund had declined by 70% since 2009 and that committee made up of county employees came together and took actions necessary to again make that fund sustainable. And those actions were followed up by support of the Board of Commissioners. Aside from that, we will be completing the Parker Meadows project in this fiscal year. And as we all know, we have ran into some obstacles out there, but we kept pressing on. We've kept moving forward. We have oversaw that from county staff. We have been actively involved. Our maintenance department has performed many tasks at that project resulting in savings in areas where we would have otherwise had to contract out with a third party and a savings of an estimated $300,000 to $500,000 by overseeing that project in-house with county staff. We have renovated the courthouse to make room to have a primary office for the district attorney in Macon County. We have been able to place SROs in all the schools in Macon County with the exception of Union Academy who shares an officer with South Macon and Macon County Early College that shares an officer with Franklin High School. We increased the capital outlay of the school system by $100,000 in the last fiscal year. We supported SEC in their expansion efforts by entering into a memorandum of understanding for the potential future use of county property in the event that SEC moves forward with their expansion efforts. We have purchased properties to expand our landfill that will lead to sustainability for the citizens of this county for years to come. By increasing this landfill 22 acres, we've increased our capacity 350% and increased the life of the landfill by 60 years. We have made accomplishments. Our health department received the Small Health Department of the Year Award by the National Association of City and County Health Departments. This was given to them in Atlanta and this was, they received this award for their successful implementation of tobacco usage policies. So, the laundry list is long and the laundry list is extensive of the accomplishments that we have made in 1415. But tonight, we're going to take a look at fiscal year 1516 and what lies ahead. The fiscal year 1516 budget as proposed is $46,646,357. Although that this is a $925,000 increase over the previous fiscal year budget, it has been, this increase is 100% supported by recurring revenues that have been generated through sales tax growth and increase in the tax collection rates. And we've been able to do all this with no money appropriated from fund balance to balance the budget. Our debt has continued to decline and we have still painted a picture of fiscal responsibility in Macon County. So, first of all, I would like to look at a few things on the revenue side or those things that are coming into this budget. Going back to the tax reappraisal and the revenue neutral tax rate, it was clear at our January 15th meeting of the Board of Commissioners that you gentlemen wanted me to propose to you a budget that was representative of a tax rate that did not exceed revenue neutral. This budget does not exceed the revenue neutral tax rate. And if you will turn in your budget message to page 28, you will see the general fund revenues by source. And when we're talking about a revenue neutral tax rate, we're talking about the tax rate as it applies to the real estate and personal property, the utility values and the motor vehicle values for our county. And that piece of the tax collections, piece of the pie there on page 28 accounts for the majority of that 57% of the overall revenue in the general fund. So, to explain a little bit about this revenue neutral tax rate and how it was calculated, we calculated it in accordance with North Carolina general statutes. And North Carolina general statute 15911 subsection E defines the revenue neutral tax rate as the rate that is estimated to produce revenue for the next fiscal year equal to the revenue for the current fiscal year if no reappraisal had occurred. So, the first step in calculating that revenue neutral tax rate is to take a look at the revenue we would have received in fiscal year, in this fiscal year had a revaluation not occurred. So, our estimated tax base, when you combine the real and personal property values, the utility values and the values of the motor vehicles in estimates provided by the tax office, that estimated tax base at fiscal year end was expected to be $9,486,120,000. Now, we all know what happened with the revaluation and the value, values declined substantially. As the revaluation results come in and were finalized, our tax base has declined to $7,668,426,710. So, to calculate the revenue neutral tax rate, we first applied the current tax rate of .00279 or 27.9 cents per $100 of assessed value to that $9,400,000 number that would be fiscal year end 1415. When we get, when we do that calculation, we come up with $26,466,274. So, with the 19.2% decline in tax base going into 1516 and that new $7.6 billion number, .00345 or 34.5 cents per $100 of assessed value is needed to gain that $26,466,274 that we gained in the prior fiscal year. So, that's the first part of the calculation. The second part of the calculation provides that a growth factor be used in calculating the revenue neutral tax rate based upon the average increase in tax base due to improvements since the last reappraisal. So, the second part of calculating the revenue neutral tax rate is to come up with a growth rate. And we went to our comprehensive annual financial statements, our CAPR, and we looked in the statistical section and it clearly lists as provided to us by our auditors those ending of year assessed values every year since the last revaluation. So, we went year to year, calculated the growth rate for each year and then came up with an average growth rate of 1.01% that our tax base has grown since the last revaluation. When you apply that growth rate to that .00345 or 34.5 cents per $100 of assessed value, you come up with a revenue neutral tax rate of 34.9 cents per $100 of assessed value. When you're doing revenue neutral calculations, you do the calculations based on 100% collection rate. We all know that our collection rate is not 100%. However, and it is important to note, and I mentioned earlier, that we have saw an increase in revenue the current fiscal year due to an improvement in our collection rates. For real and personal property and utilities, the collection rate improved from 96, from 96.79% in fiscal year 1415 to 97.34% in fiscal year 1516. Our motor vehicles' collection rate improved from 87.32% in fiscal year 1415 to 92.24% in fiscal year 1516. And the drastic improvement in the motor vehicle tax collection rate is due to the implementation of the North Carolina Tax and Tag Program. You can attribute that increase in collection rate directly to that program. The additional revenue generated through these improved collection rates is $202,993. When you factor in that 1.01% growth rate to the .00345, that additional 1.01% growth rate gains an additional $280,680 in revenue. So, as I said, going in, we have additional revenue due to improved tax collections. We have also seen positive growth in our sales tax and this is growth that's being realized statewide. Through the April payment, North Carolina local sales taxes were up 13%. They're projecting this growth to stabilize, but by the end of the year, North Carolina on average should see about 7% growth in sales tax. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners in our revenue forecast for 14, for 1516 recommends budgeting sales tax at 3 to 4%. And that is largely attributable to two Senate bills that are out there right now, Senate Bill 608 and Senate Bill 369, which you've heard us discuss, that would, that are redistribution of sales tax. And what they do is eventually it will totally take the local sales tax. It will go to the state and then the state will distribute it out on a per capita basis rather than what we're used to with the point of sale. Under Senate Bill 369 and the calculations we've received, by fiscal year 1819, if this Senate bill goes through, Macon County can stand to lose as much as $1.1 million in sales tax revenue. In Macon County, our local sales tax was up 10.35% through the February payment. We're projecting through the end of fiscal year 1415 for our sales tax collections to finish somewhere between 6 and 7%. We have, and in using that number, we have arrived at a projected sales tax figure for fiscal year 1415 of $6,550,110. Going into fiscal year 1516, we have budgeted 3% growth on top of this number and sales tax has been budgeted at $6.742 million which accounts for about 15% of our revenues in our general fund. And the, I was speaking with some colleagues around the region, there are some counties that are surrounding us that are budgeting as high as 7% in sales tax growth for the coming fiscal year. And with the uncertainty surrounding these Senate bills and with the conservative approach that we have always taken in budgeting, we decided that 3% would allow us to, would be representative of a sales tax level that if something does happen to sales tax and if these discussions continue, we will still be in a position where we have not tied any operating expenses and made them dependent on a sales tax level that could potentially hurt us in the future. As I mentioned earlier, through, through, we will continue to enjoy a stable financial position. Our fund balance will continue to improve. Our fund balance will continue to grow. Our fund balance will continue to remain at a level above that of our peers and above the average of the state of North Carolina. In fiscal year 13 and 14, these are actual figures, on 1314, we ended with about 34.67% in fund balance. We are going, and again, that is fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. In fiscal year 1415, even with the appropriation of funds for the Parker Meadows complex, which we appropriated a half a million dollars for, out of fund balance, our fund balance will still grow from fiscal year 1314. Our debt will continue to decline. Since 2011, our debt has decreased by 18, over $18 million, leaving our debt as it stands right now outstanding to around $44 million. Our debt payments in this year are going to fall by about $465,000. That will give us the opportunity with these freed up expenditures to direct them to other areas in the organization where we have needs that are unfulfilled moving into 1516. Continue to focus expenditures in priority areas. It will continue to improve the quality of service in this organization and it will enable us to take on additional responsibilities brought about by things such as the Parker Meadows project becoming operational and the additional responsibilities that came as a result of revisions to the health insurance plan. So, we will be able to do all this in the coming year. Historically, and you can see through past funding levels, Macon County has always made public safety and education a primary focus with our budget. This year, in terms of education, we will continue to support the schools' operating needs. Operating needs will be budgeted at fiscal year 1415 levels at $7,338,000. We will, in addition to that, increase the schools' capital outlay line item again this year by $100,000, bringing that to $300,000 with $50,000 earmarked to go toward the track renovations and Highlands School softball field renovations, which we are doing as part of the QZAP project. Southwestern Community College, we will increase our operating funding to them by $10,000. This will go towards covering an increase in a maintenance contract as well as helping offset some of the costs that are incurred as maintenance staff from the Jackson County campus comes to the Macon campus to perform work. And at the end of the day, when you look at our contribution in Macon County to education, we're 20% of our overall budget goes towards education and goes toward providing the students in this community with the highest quality education possible. Public safety, we will, to start with, in our emergency management department, there will be two additional dispatchers that have been recommended in this budget. What has happened there in emergency management since 1994 was the first year that we began staffing the dispatch with two full-time 24/7 dispatchers. And in this fiscal year in 1994, dispatch received 10,399 calls per service. In 2015, dispatch received over 33,000 calls per service and we're still operating and staffing that 911 communications at 1994 levels with two 24/7 dispatchers. We've included two, again, additional dispatchers. Through an increase in the part-time line item to the emergency medical services, we will be able to operate five ambulances 24/7 in Macon County and have them running. Right now, we operate five ambulances with the exception of one 24-hour shift, or one, excuse me, 12-hour shift on Sundays from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And again, that addition to the part-time line item will enable a fully 24/7, five ambulances function. In the detention center, through, with the cooperation of the sheriff and a commitment by Mission Hospital to begin providing oversight for the involuntary commitments that are housed there, we will be able to add four full-time staff to the detention center. And when I talk about the commitment by Mission Hospital, that is substantial because we ran the numbers and it was estimated that we were spending approximately $196,000 a year just in the oversight for involuntary commitments while they were waiting to be transported to an approved facility at Mission Hospital. So, as Mission picked that up, we were able to reduce the part-time and overtime line items, which the deputies that were sitting with these individuals were getting compensated out of. We were able to reduce those by $172,600 and add that to the salaries line item, enabling us to put four new staff there. And speaking with the sheriff, this is a great thing. This, as we will all remember 1415, I think it was four attempted escapes in fiscal year 1415 with two being successful and one resulting in a homicide. The sheriff feels that by doing this, and he's here and that, but I'm just, I was thinking for him, I guess, that this will directly contribute to improve security at this facility and going towards keeping those citizens in our community safe. The public safety portion of the budget is about a quarter of our general fund expenditures. And again, if I could direct your attention, that's on page 31 in the budget notebook if you want to look at all expenditures by function. We will improve our service quality. There has been $236,500 in capital improvements budgeted in the information technology department this year. One of those improvements happens to be the $72,000 purchase of a new phone system. And to give a little bit of history on that, we had a period during this fiscal year where our phones, our voicemail was down for a month. And, you know, this, as phones are, play a direct role in how we communicate and how we provide public service to the citizens of Macon County. It's imperative that we have a phone system that's reliable and a home system that we can depend on. When we install this system at $72,000, it is going to be an IP or an internet-based phone system. What this is going to do to our operating costs, not only are we going to have a new phone system, but it's going to substantially reduce our long-distance bill and it's going to take away the need for a nearly $60,000 a year maintenance that we're spending on this current phone system that's 18 years old. We ran the numbers. We expect that in next year's budget, we will see operating costs related to our phone system reduced by $86,000 following the implementation of this new phone system. Aside from the installation of the phone system and information technology, we're also installing a SAN data storage network. And right now, currently, how we store all the data at the county, the servers that we store that on are full. Their IT is having to constantly move stuff around. And if you, if you all will remember, this has been being discussed for quite some time by information technology. They brought it to budget work sessions for about the last three or four years. And it has gotten to a point where we just can't put it off anymore. We had a situation just last week where we had, some earlier this week, where we had a guy here working on this SAN system all week. We totally lost our capability to log into Munis and it's a direct result of this, the data overpopulating our current system. So, we have budgeted for half of the replacement cost this year and we plan on budgeting for the other half next year. And if I'm not mistaken, that was budgeted at about $98,000 for one half replacement for this year 1516. Macon County Transit through grant funding will improve its service quality. It'll get four new lift-equipped vans and it will have an electronic fare card system installed in each transit vehicle that will be a complement to the VET grant and the software and hardware that we bought as part of that. It will dovetail with it. Furthermore, they, through grant funding, they have received funds to equip four transit vehicles with propane upgrades. This will substantially reduce our reliance on fuel, thereby reducing our reliance on fuel costs, thereby allowing us to keep our rates in transit at an affordable level. Overall, the fiscal year 1516 budget contains $978,500 in capital improvements. And again, this is a noteworthy statement as we did not, we used no fund balance to balance this budget. And we were able to incorporate needed vehicles in departments that needed vehicles. We were able to upgrade our information technology systems that were in dire need of repair. And we were able to increase our capital outlay contribution to the Macon County schools. We have taken on additional responsibilities, as I mentioned earlier. Implementations of the recommendations that were presented to this board for health insurance plan revisions will cost $530,000. That's a direct increase to our operating costs as the county will be increasing its contributions into that fund. With these changes, however, we expect for this fund to again become sustainable. We expect to begin building the net position in this fund and getting it back to where it needs to be. I have recommended a 2% cost of living adjustment for Macon County employees in the absence of being able to implement the final phase of the pay plan that was being implementation on 1314. In saying that, I have also addressed and highlighted in my budget message, I would like to form a group of county employees to take a closer look at some of those recommendations in that pay plan. There are some areas in there, including the basis of rewarding based on years in position rather than rewarding based on years in the organization. We ran the numbers on that. What you have is, you've got situations where you've got two 20-year employees. One 20-year employee's been in the same position for 20 years. Another 20-year employee went either laterally or moved up in the organization, basically wherever the organization needed it or hurt. But if they changed positions, then this same 20-year employee, this 20-year employee would say salary would increase by $5,000, this one would increase by 800. So, there's some, there's a little room there that I feel like can create some disenfranchising toward the organization. I would like to take a look at that and as well as compare our, our salaries and benefit package to some other counties that are close proximity and maybe expand a little bit on that Springstead pay study and hopefully bring our results or our findings from that study group back and forth forward sometime in the next fiscal year. The Parker Meadows complex in this picture right here, we were out there the other day and this just doesn't do it justice. This was made when we first got started. And if you go out there now, those buildings are going up. Chairman and I rode out there the other day. The buildings are going up. There's starting to be some paving going on. The grass is coming in and looks great. It's just, it's going to be a first-class, state-of-the-art facility out there at Parker Meadows. But we knew in 1415 that it would result in some increases to the operating budget. These increases have, are minimal, but at the same time, these increases will be able to take on the operation of this facility. What we're going to do is we're going to add, I have proposed to add, a maintenance supervisor in the building and grounds budget that do end season will be at Parker Meadows full-time. Aside from that, there are three people paid out the maintenance budget that currently work at the recreation park. We will move one of those to Parker Meadows during peak season, so you'll have two full-time people at Parker Meadows complex during peak season as well as when needed, we have put additional money in the recreation part-time line item and part-time staff can come assist as needed. And as I understand and have been speaking with Seth, we have, he has already been speaking with some tournament directors and maybe have some things in the works for later on in the fall. So, that will come into play right off the bat. Also, Seth's operating budget has had money put in there to buy things like portable mounds, bases and things that that facility will need once it gets up and becomes operational. As I close, I would just like to say, it has, it has been a great As I close, I would just like to say, it has, it has been a great year in 1415. We have made some great accomplishments. We have been fiscally responsible. We have continued to provide the citizens of Macon County with what I feel is a great and high-quality level of public service. And as we head into 1516, I feel like this proposed budget has the tools to be sure that that level of service improves, to be sure that we're able to take on additional responsibilities that we have, that we have, that we will be taking on due to capital projects and increasing contribution levels to our health insurance fund. And I feel like that it is representative of, again, a very conservative approach on the revenue side. It gives us security for the uncertainties that currently are in the state legislature in Raleigh. And it will put us in position and ready for whatever comes our way in the future. So again, it is my pleasure and my honor to present to you the fiscal year 1516 proposed budget. And I have distributed to you your budget notebooks. The budget message is the first, the first thing up. It kind of gives a high-level 50,000-foot view of everything that's going on in this budget as well as the justification behind the recommendations that are contained in this budget. So if you would, I would encourage you to take a look at that and before our work session. And please feel free to contact us anytime with any questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say, Mr. Rowland, you have, you have, at least at first glance, have done an outstanding job of carrying out the wishes and desires of this board. We did ask you, in no uncertain terms, to make this budget revenue new. And as far as you've done that, to reduce our debt and to improve services for our county at the same time, which you've recalled. And I commend you for that, Mr. Chief. You have a great presentation. I'm looking forward to reading through the whole budget. And for members, I would encourage you to go through this budget line by line on an individual basis and ask our county manager, Lori, specific questions if you might have them. And then later this meeting, we did set a budget work session for a date. What's our timeframe? Will we redo that in the next two weeks?
Yeah, because we're set to have a prep here on June 9.
I think so. So we'll read it. If you guys are thinking, maybe look on the calendar in the next little bit, we'll need to set a budget work session to go through and that will be the time to ask specific questions. Any questions or comments?
Do we talk a little bit about our report?
Why did you land on that? Well, we need, speaking with Lori, need to do it in the next two weeks, which would be...
The week, the 26th?
Next week will be pre-...
But the 25th is more late. So I guess my first suggestion would be let us look Tuesday, May 26th. Or, I think we're good. So we'll go ahead and set that.
If they're back, Mike?
No, next year.
Thank you. Do we recess this week?
We will.
Recess it. Does that come back yet?
But we should probably adjourn. We need to hold the same time.
Six o'clock?
I mean, I'm just suggesting.
I think you can recess to act with any date, but six o'clock, I guess is a good date, a good time. We usually set this out, we usually make that through or whatever.
Could we set that at 5:00?
There's no problem with setting at 5:00.
Yep. Okay. We'll go ahead and set that meeting time for 5:00. That will be next Tuesday, May 26th, 5:00 p.m. here at 5 West Main Street, Franklin Road, Carolina. And again, I would encourage you gentlemen to go through this. I think it would be desirable if you have specific questions, go ahead and ask those questions. I think Mr. Rowland will be available for Lori, will be available to us. Probably would save us some time. If you have specific questions, go ahead and get those answered, go through it and read through it and get questions about the revenue side. I will say, I told Eric this property, I think he is being, I think with wisdom in it, he's being extremely conservative on the, on the sales tax or revenue. Admiral Tax rate, we asked to make that revenue new for the taxpayers. He's done that. We've seen that our sales tax continues to increase and every taxpayer that I've seen says he probably could have budgeted at least five or six, but he's chosen to budget three. And I think he's wisdom and I concur that he knows it's very conservative. He could have budgeted another couple percent and added to the budget. I think with that, we've been done with some abandonment, so I commend you for that. Other than that, I think excellent job and we'll, we'll get into it and ask some specifics.
There's, the finance office has, under the direction of Lori, I mean, they have been spot-on with, throughout this budget process, give me the information I need when I need. I can't thank them enough. I can't really, I can't thank Lori. She's great and I couldn't have done any of this without her. And you have all the graphs that are in this PowerPoint in your budget. They should be, before any of the tabs, they're all at the front.
After the budget message, you get into all the charts?
You get in, yeah. Should be every...
So that we start from page...
That first tab that says general fund expenditures, all those graphs are right before it.
Page 26.
Yes. Derek, I know you asked Richard Biden earlier today, do we expect, what's the expectation on appeals process?
He's had, he's taken...
We're expecting more increase in value, which gives a tendency to...
So he conservatively budgeted for loss to appeals. I think he budgeted 90 million and expected loss for appeals. So we've got that covered.
And that's reflected?
Yes, that's reflected in this budget. Very good.
Any other questions or comments?
This is great. Well, Matt's good and good job, Mr. Mayor.
He thanked Lori, he thanked her, Lori will be available. You'll see her washing.
Go to Raleigh, run for it.
Yeah. We brought her mine. We said, yeah. Thank you, guys.
The one graph I don't see in here, and I could be just specifically tied to the graph showing the debt.
It's in his budget message.
That graph would be in, actually in my budget message, it's on page...
It is in there.
On page nine, on page nine.
I can read that. I didn't do that. He said, you said all the graphs are on page 26.
Right. That was, that was our mistake.
He doesn't, his budget message saw it and duplicated it in the graphics.
Let's do it again, thank you. Yes, sir.
I think you've given me an answer to this, on 31 education, is 18% on page 32, 14%.
Yeah, if you will look on that, back on page 31, the, you have what is a transfer to debt service fund there at $2,082,083. That's, what it's done is it's taken this portion of debt that we pay on the school construction and school improvements that are still calculated in this payment and it's put them in that overall figure to give a better representation of what portion of our budget truly goes to education.
It's reflected in 18%.
Right. That transfer to debt service takes it in and that one.
But that does affect it to the school system. That paid from us to debt service, which is for the schools.
The schools.
Totally, it's 20%.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's up to the, a relatively small amount of it here in higher budget and the county manager mentioned it with his inclusion of the school budget, which modeled a region where capital outlay funded $300,000. I think that's important. I personally asked for that and we've gone into this and I think there's a lot of wisdom in trying to get that back up, especially as our debt, most, vast majority of our debt is in the school.
I agree, I appreciate it.
We need to start putting some money back into the capital or we'll be in the same position we were in in the eighties when we obviously moved out, while we spent $19 million to paint the roof and things like that, same position to some degree in the nineties. So hopefully we're going to avoid damage.
Yes, sir.
Now, if it's a little day, not a lot tomorrow. Gentlemen, any other questions, comments, concerns? Nice job here. Out of number two, we have the approval of fire district map for Ema Hollins Fire Department Substation, just in Warren Cave.
Bobby, I might be going short, but I'll email you one, sorry.
Thanks for being here. What you're actually getting in your hands, I apologize, I haven't packed it, but we just finished this map on Tuesday. And for those of you that may not be aware, Hollins Fire Department is getting ready to open a new substation out on 64 East toward Cachers. And what we're hoping is that they're going to have an opening day of July 1st. One of the things that happens when you put a substation in like that is you change their maps of the area that they serve. If we're not changing the service area, they're not including any new properties. But what happens is you have more folks, since they have a split protection class that will be in a different rated area. For instance, you'll have more folks who will follow within the five-mile area that will present protection class five, which means a savings on their insurance form. And you'll actually have a few folks in there that will follow within a protection class nine that before was in a protection class 10 or since were no protection for the insurance issue. The process by which this happened is we approved the map locally at the commissioners board meeting. And there's also a split meeting going on tonight. Jackson County's approving the Jackson County portion of this tonight at their meeting at 6:00 p.m. tonight. Once those approvals are completed, we'll send those to the state. The state will approve these maps and actually make their reflections in the protection class. Hopefully we'll have that done by the time the July 1st date rolls around. So we were in a time crunch to try and hopefully get these done so we can keep them on track for their opening day. So with all that being said, those are some very small maps. I have the large maps here that will show you a whole lot more detail if you'd like to see those. But essentially, you're looking at the orange areas and the green area. The orange areas are the places, particularly out 64 East. And now Buck Creek, they're going to see a change in the protection class five. The green area is basically the same areas that will go from a 10 to a 12. So it means money back in the pockets of those folks in those areas. So essentially tonight, I'm asking for you to officially approve the new substation map for the Hollins Fire Department.
Sir?
A motion by Commissioner Tate, second by me.
One of the substations just that we will do man.
I'm not sure if they're going to change their staff if you need to. What they do is they have to have engines and tanker and they have eight figures of roster, which they already have a figure of roster.
Any other discussion? Here you go, I'll perhaps say I, I propose that closing capacity, like, one. We have, item number four is an item to complete the closeout Parker Meadows Recreation Project and this weekend on our campaign. Derek, Commissioner, just real quick, any fire departments you expecting to pass for tax in 36?
There are actually two that have asked for it in 36. One under the Park Chapel, one under the...
Thank you. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Forward, Commissioner Hicken, you had asked last meeting, what was left at Parker Meadows project? What was needed to be completed? What would I...
What was, what was needed that was left to be finished out there?
And with that, we have, I've prepared a, kind of a summary here of what's going on. It contains sites that, or it contains the costs that were directly attributable to this gravesite. And for that reason, this is really not new news. We knew it all along. We have saw this from the get-go, that we have had to do redesign changes, we've had to redo our engineering, we've had to redo our surveying, we've had to redo the construction drawings, we've had to redo parking lots, the staking of the fences, everything. Retaining walls that came as a result, most recently approved at our last meeting. And so we've known that this was coming all along and now we're at a point to where we would like to go ahead and continue discussing with the Eastern Band the possibility for reimbursement, which we have been actively doing since this happened. We would like to be able to go ahead and continue that. But at the same time, we also understand that we would like to finish this project in this fiscal year, before the beginning of fiscal year 1516 and get it settled. And as we go into 1516, focus on the operation of this project rather than completing it too. So in order to do that, what I have summarized here is the burial site cost. And if you will look, it is up on your screen. From here, you have invoices or you have amounts actually that we have actually paid out through December of 2014. It was $72,950. Then we had, at this time, we'd also approved some change orders. And if you'll recall, approving the work construction change order, which was a deed up of $60,000 from this contract. But at the same time, as we had to recess those fields, we made those dugouts to Mon Creek to support the dirt bearing wall there at the fields. So we had to add 103, 338 to Penland. The subtotal for these change orders is $120,000. So that right there is $193,663 in invoices that we have, that we can produce and invoices that are expected, like the grading cost for the Penland. That is an invoice we are currently awaiting. But we can tie that right back and directly back to that gravesite. Commissioner Tate had mentioned last week that he wanted us to get an exact quote on those retaining walls, that he would like to see it. This is the exact quote for the material in the retaining walls. And materials only for these retaining walls are $51,269. I would also, before we move forward, I'd like to go back. If you'll see here, there is a $19,375 estimated invoice that we thought we would be receiving for, that we would be paying out for preservation of the burial site. Turns out that the Cherokee Preservation Foundation, in cooperation with the Eastern Band, has contributed $29,000 that will go toward the preservation of this monument. So this has been deducted off the grand total and we're very grateful to the Cherokee Preservation Foundation and the Eastern Band.
We've already received the check.
We have received the check for that. So we, we're very appreciative of that and we're very hopeful that we can continue in these discussions moving forward for reimbursement costs on the total project. Again, the Penland contracting invoice for the retaining walls, $51,000 in materials. And this sheet right here, which Lori has put together, is all of the items, basically the total project of Parker Meadows. The items you see highlighted... The items you see highlighted here in yellow are a Vincent Anderson change order that we will be discussing tonight. That is five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, where the piling that he was putting in had to be rerouted upon graveside discovery. The concrete steps to lower youth fields, again, had we not recessed the fields, there would be no need for concrete steps down to the lower youth fields. And the A and T fence change order of ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars comes from moving these fences back away from the retaining walls that were placed at those lower recessed youth fields. So when you take all of that into consideration and add all that together, it comes to a of two hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-three cents of cost that we feel are representative and can be directly tied back to that graveside. The request tonight, and the total amount that we'll be discussing, is three hundred and three thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. And that three hundred and three thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, the difference between that two forty-four and that three oh three number are items that have came about as this project has progressed, such as the greenway walk. You will notice here, right below that, the middle yellow, the concrete step to the lower youth fields, go down two more, a board walk for a greenway over wet area. As you know, where at the park, there will be a greenway that goes entirely around the park. But as you know, right in the middle of the park, there sits a federally designated wetland. I mean, it's wet right there, and it's going to stay wet year round. And that's something, you know, we knew the wetland was there, but as we progressed and the project is near completion and we get down to levels that are at final grade, you know, the water's still there and it will continue to be there. So like that eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars is to construct a boardwalk to go over that wetland area, allowing our greenway to be continuous without being broke up by wet area. When you look at items such as the fence cap, the safety netting, and the backstop padding, that's items, the backstop padding are put around the concrete areas of the backstop to keep kids from running into the fences or the retaining wall areas and getting hurt. The netting is to put between the fences and the dugouts to keep valve balls, as Mr. Shields has alluded to before, on the burial site. You know, he asked the question, how are people going to not get hit with the balls right there? Well, with the safety netting, we hope we can put up this. You'll notice here the, the enclosure back inside and lower roof edge of the dugouts. This is a eight thousand dollar expenditure that when we went out to the park and the recreation director and the person overseeing the project, Jack Morgan, you know, there's a lot of concrete around there. And those fields are out in the open, and the sun is beaming down on there all day. It's just, that would be a mechanism built in to keep it cooler in the dugouts for the kids. But these, this remaining fifty thousand dollars, what I'm driving home is, was recommendations that were made by the recreation director and the person overseeing the project that they felt were necessary, that upon completion would give us the best park that we could possibly have. And when you look at the grand scheme of things, and you take the two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars that we can attribute to finding the burial site out of that mix, we're talking about fifty thousand dollars. And that is, that's right on the money for this three point four million dollar project. So those are the items, each items with an A, with an N A beside it, are those items that were brought forth by Jack and Seth, and they're here tonight to speak to those. Those are items that I feel like that we have, that we can discuss and discuss with them. But as far as that two hundred and forty-four thousand, that is eating into things, and you'll notice where the blue and the purple meet there, like the hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for the paving to pave the roads at the park, that, you know, we had to, that's coming out of that two hundred and forty-four thousand that we paid out. That's went toward the bog seal, the striping of the road, and those things that are crucial and main components of the project, we have had to spend mitigating the graveside that was located at Parker Meadows Project. So while we do continue to discuss with the Eastern Band and do plan on continuing these talks, we are in need of receiving money to finish this project. Now, that money, there is a, it's Fund Fifty-Six, it is the Cartuka J Sewer King. And this was, the Cartuka J Sewer Project, how long ago was that, Lord?
The money was transferred back in June of two thousand and five. That's been almost ten years.
So almost ten years ago, there, the money was transferred to the Cartuka J Sewer Line Project. That money has not been used and has remained in the fund balance of that account. How much is in there, Lord?
Five hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
There's five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in there on that project. So for that three hundred and three thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, we would be proposing that to be appropriated from Fund Fifty-Six, which is that Cartuka J Sewer Line Project, to Fund Fifty-Five. Again, this is money that is in the budget, this is money that does not impact our financial position, but it does not impact our fund balance, it does not impact the general fund at all. So that would be our recommendation, if the board so chooses to allow us to complete this project in fiscal year fourteen, fifteen.
Probably have you been to contact the Eastern Band and can you confirm it to continue to discuss?
The first is good, talking about the pretty place of the graveside. And let you see how long that process took. That those discussions aren't continued, we were very hopeful that. And as the project gets more and more completed, that makes you seem more hopeful, once they see the project. And I think this county has done everything possible that we know to do, as you can see with the amount of money that we spent to do the right thing about the Eastern Band and about this graveside. And so we were very hopeful that discussions are all been positive. And so, but it is a, it's a delicate, slow process to manage.
And Mr. Chairman, I would like to, the construction, this will bring it, this will bring it to three point four million. And just to put it out there, if you will recall, the engineer that began this project, Michael Boyd, had estimated that there would, it was no way possible that we could construct this project for less than five million dollars.
Five point one.
Five point one million.
Exactly.
So, and I encourage you to go out there and look at it. It is really a, it is a great project. Again, we have had, we've had a few bad hands dealt to us, but we played the hand we were dealt.
Couple things to point out here. Man, you did discuss this with me, lays onto the recognition that we'll be involved in at that standpoint. And I'll say, first of all, I agree with his recommendation. I would encourage us to go ahead and have to redo and finish the project. But if you look at the grand scope of this, I'm glad you pointed out, the original figure that was thrown out was five point four. To build this, I know some folks, critics of the project, use that figure, and I'm happy that we came to three point four. The other part of that is, we look at actual numbers of what we actually did out there, we back out those burial costs. The fifty thousand dollars represents about one point five percent. So we were within one point five percent of our original figures. That's pretty darn good. So I really attribute that to our staff, you, Lloyd, Seth, Jack, that's been out there on the side. I think this did a great job of making sure we got the best funding we could. Had we gone about this a different way, had that project managed outside the county, we probably wouldn't have hit it five point four million. As a matter of fact, I've had some discussions with other counties, talking about they want to build a project like this, and they're all saying how, we've got figures of six and eight million dollars for this, for four field projects. They really can't believe that we've done this for three point four. So with all that said, I think you've done a good job at House of managing this project. And I would, I would concur with the management's recommendation to transfer three oh three two sixteen to Fund Fifty-Six to Fund Fifty-Five to complete the project. And then, don't forget the fact that we are continuing discussions with the Eastern Band, but we're not guaranteed that they're going to do anything beyond what they have. So we either finish the project or we don't, and it makes sense to finish it. So I would, I would agree with the recommendation.
I would discuss, say, exactly anything that's answered.
No need to make motions, say, before discussion.
Probably, I would entertain a motion to transfer the money from Fund Fifty-Six to Fund Fifty-Five.
My motion then, three hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars to transfer to Fund Fifty-Six. This is a project, three projects for a big time.
Yeah, I wish you'd have said, say, my permission, be the discussion.
What do we lack on the sewer project?
Electrician for Anderson, Madison, that Dave, testing the house and the water.
For the sewer, that station. And then, oh. We're talking about money from.
Yeah, where we're taking the money from, I'm sorry. Oh, for fun, what's left?
She leave that two hundred thousand dollars.
It leave two, it leave two hundred and four.
Yeah, what's left? Leave that project. I know we've got the rip rap.
Is it complete or is it still ongoing or what?
We're steering all the rip rap issues, both members.
We have the rip rap and the, there is another ongoing issue with, is the, Chester is the, the one on Depot Street or Main Street, off the Main Street, we're still discussing.
Still going on there. That one's not going to be terribly split.
And based on the discussions that we have had about the rip rap, the money that will be left in that account even after this transfer will be sufficient to cover the rip rap. And those two things, the one Chester has alluded to and the rip rap issue are, we'll have enough money covered in there.
Will be less than the two point four.
It will be less than what remains in the Cartuka J Sewer Fund after we appropriate money out of it. And Chester had made a, mentioned to me that we, the motion should include to complete the project as proposed by the county manager. And that motion, and you accept that?
Oh, you have.
Can you accept that as well, Mr. Say? But, but we do need to get those, that other project wrapped up.
Yeah, we have a deal done right now.
Yeah, I guarantee.
Yeah, I love, I hate that we're over, but at least we have some already allocated others.
Right, right.
All the way out in school, you know, it's over, but we just don't want to quit the funding.
Right, and then, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
When we went back, going back to that regional project thing, Chester, we even got Roy, which I remember, don't feel, it's a lot of it. It's like stuffy, but we had, you know, there was a lot of discussion about the amount of money that we had set aside, and Chester will remember that discussion. So we come back just like, just like this problem every time. It's always something, you know, so we ask for the higher potential of the project than the lessons we got here, you know, and glad we had it for this reason, but also for the reason you need to do. So it's always something, it's back and back.
And I'd also like to mention that the legal issue that, or the issue that we're discussing with legal counsel on the Cartuka J Sewer Line Project, we've always been in contact with the Rural Center. And we're confident that we can get some grant money through the Rural Center. We recently got a continuance of the grant, and we're hopeful that we'll get some money from them to complete a portion of that project.
Real complicated, where's one at? Two. Where is the two?
It would never be there. Two is definitely.
We hope it's still there.
It dropped, it was like, it's never been, it's never been in there.
No. We would see you in my, in my college. He's ready. He would go back to the Fund Fifty-Six.
Bobby, you guys say to go to the general fund? I would go to the general fund, if you don't need any of that.
How's that?
I would let you out.
Please, why you wait on that? Do we, is this it this time? We'll see y'all again in another month.
This is it? This is it?
The motion was made last time. Same duty, up to fifty thousand dollars. You have a high, but it's a fifty-four thousand.
As I understand it, fifty thousand dollars is just the material. And as I understand, Mr. Penland, whatever's over that labor is.
He just want to, he, he's not going to.
Not, he's gonna, he's gonna do it. So that's, I mean, and that just goes back to.
And all that's included?
Yeah, that's been included in here. And just right there, that goes back to some of the, again, even as this looks, this could have been, there's a reason why these projects that other people are pricing are six and eight million dollars for four fields. But people like Mr. Louis Penland, Mr. Larry Penland, that have worked out there, they've done a tremendous job. And I promise you that the county got the best deal and the best job possible, as those two men.
Full disclosure, the way that happened, it came to the point that they needed to do that work, and we needed action from this board. And I rode out there and had conversations with Jack, with Seth was there, and Mr. Penland was there. And I asked the question, okay, I see what you mean as far as functionality, people didn't sit here, avoiding the bank, all that. And I said, how much is it going to cost to put the retaining walls on large fields? And he said, thirty-five thousand dollars. And I said, to do the same thing with small fields, it'll be fifteen, thirty-five, fifteen, that's fifty. So that's where the figure fifty came from me, back to you guys. And when he started doing the work, he had estimated going out in a hundred feet, am I right about that? Hundred feet, see, went further than that, but he didn't come back and say need more money. So he just, he said, well, it's the cost of more materials, and I told you it needed to be done. That was his.
What's really amazing about the whole project is, and yes, two hundred and forty-four thousand, what you said, you can back that out, you take any three point four million dollars, I don't care what, you can check, private, government, whatever, and it came in at one point five percent, one point five percent reimbursement. That's probably right. Really, that's, that's a big, there's a lot of big folks. Does that include the equipment, say? That care of the.
We've brought in the.
He's a mechanic. He's already got the mower and the forty-dollar utility vehicle.
And two, we also bought a maintenance bike, another commercial mower. And another thing I didn't hit on in my budget presentation, the two full-time people at Parker Meadows will be responsible for the upkeep and cleaning of the facilities, as well as all the mowing and laying off of the fields inside the fences. We've been able to add an additional staff member in maintenance, aside from the maintenance supervisor, using attrition, that will create an additional two-man mowing crew for our maintenance staff. And the remainder of the banks and everything else around the fields will go into our mowing rotation and be mowed, that maintenance mowing crew, once every eight days at the complex.
Does he now shower?
No.
If we go for the conversation, you know, our mowing season here is eight months, that parry set. And the way they structured this, we're not going to have three people sitting at Parker Meadows.
Parker Meadows year-round, which is a little too big. They're going to be working maintenance, changing light bulbs, doing electrical work, and do those kind of things. They'll be assigned to Parker Meadows.
Here's the mow peak season.
That's, that wouldn't directly say it, but I, I think we need to understand that we're basically using folks for two different jobs, dedicated jobs.
And that is highlighted too, in your message, so.
You look very interested in regular parking fields, but who's out in that city?
I, I just lived there, and there's, I, I was counting, on, on our building alone, there was six, two people. And there was four fields.
This will be the same way they'll be making on the, on this, on this, every day of every year. Three, two, five, every year.
Yep.
That's what it's for.
All right, what?
Question I get asked every day.
It's the main thing. Equipment's out of there, and it's our, our project.
We are planning a, a grand opening, August first. That, that's, that's a Saturday, that's the, the closest Saturday. It'll probably be complete sometime in, in July. We don't know if it's the first weekend or the third weekend. And our grand opening ceremony, the people that have, have a ball field named after them, they're going to be part of that ceremony. So they're all needing a date to get things lined up. So I, I met with Jack, and we came up with, with the August first as the official opening date for, for Parker Meadows.
Let me hear today, like our, like noon?
Uh, we're, the ceremony's not planned yet, but we're thinking somewhere around four o'clock to where we can ongoing it, and we want to be able to cut the lights on that night. You know, a lot, a lot of folks don't consider a ballpark, a ballpark until they, they see it lit up. So that, it'll be a, a kind of a drop-in, and maybe have a few games out there with some, some local little leaguers and stuff, and then some entertainment, but then a ribbon cutting about midway in, in that timeframe. But, but also, we want to carry it on until we have to cut the lights on that Saturday for that opening ceremony.
Before you talk about, showing I too, and Seth and Jack, and we were trying, the only concern, real concern I have, is that we put a lot of play on this field, and we have a hot summer and a dry summer, and you can run the river through there and not keep that grass. You've got the kids out there, I just, I'm sure Seth, you've got a plan, but you've got a lot of people asking for tournaments and stuff. The first year, the grass needs to be.
And I'll speak to that, we talked about that, Seth's had a lot of requests for tournaments. Was leaving for that, I think, four, or you got?
We've got six total for, for this fall already, which is, which is not.
The grass will cancel, right?
Well, not, oh yeah, no, it's, we're, we're going to be very picky on some of these places, or you can destroy one in a hurry. So that, every tournament director knows that, and we're opening a new park, and they understand that we're going to be on a little, a little stricter rules than what.
Seth's got an old policy, he can fit, he's introduced, he told me about four, and then there was two other.
Two others.
Have any team tournaments, you know, forty, thirty?
The, the smallest one is, is one that they're moving from Haywood County that had, that had thirty-five in it. That, that'll be the smallest tournament.
One has sixty.
Uh, one could have sixty plus.
That's four thousand.
Uh, and I'm not sure about the tournament director that we, that we met in Tennessee that wants to bring people from southern and eastern side of Tennessee over, over here too. That, that's a whole nother area that we've not really tapped into. I don't know how large his tournaments are going to be yet, but he's got, he says he represents about six hundred teams in the whole of the state of Tennessee, and he knows that they all want somewhere new to come. And he says that basically, where, where we're poised for Franklin is, we can pull teams out of northeast Georgia, South Carolina, all west North Carolina, and, and eastern Tennessee, but without a problem. There's good roads in here, and he don't see a reason why, why we can't fill up every weekend.
We start, we start next.
We start, yeah.
Proceed.
How, how do you flag project?
Well, we've got some costs, the cost in, including in dirt line, I would say, it's maybe okay, which.
Do you have, do you have flags on each field, or every, every four flags?
Compared with the FWN department, I mean, Mr. Shields was the example for that, we made out there, and of course, his flag tells us a lot of it. And as you go in there, it's still the, the US flag, the state flag, and county flag, then we just have to put one more US flag on the adult field on the back lane, or too high, then it'd be, the US flag would be seen from everything.
So you just have to have a flag, visibility, and have it on everything?
No, just do.
Some of the, we need to pay attention to that, that would be included.
That's included. This is everything.
Early description, on the motion.
You're done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, that motion actually happens.
It's getting time for a work session, we've already done that. This has been included in, in the presentation we just went over and included in the costs. This is the email from our engineer, Larry Black, that confirms the change orders submitted by Jerry Anderson for the rerouting of the piping due to location of the burial site. Coming right behind that is also included in the project, this goes back to the monument that is going to be around the grave site. We have, this contract is being renewed by county attorney. It is with Kevin Rogers, who will perform the rock work around the monument at Parker
The commander said, these, these, these are out of the project, what, do we need to vote on these?
Yes. The first would be approval of the change order to the Vincent and Anderson contract in the amount of five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
If the county manager, in the next two, three years.
An authorization.
Motion I take, second. Discussion. You're done, all in favor, say aye. Vote, that motion passes.
Chairman, I make the motion to re-put the construction contract to Spoke Mountain Latimer, or the, the work around the grave site.
There are motions, second, any discussion? You're done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, that motion passes. Anything else?
I would, would it out, we're processing tonight's meeting until next Tuesday, that's right, May twenty-sixth, at five o'clock, five o'clock.
Didn't you say bye?
Yeah.
Five o'clock, vote, that won't take too long. I would do a motion, two, you know what I mean? What's that? I'm doing a motion, and I would do two, two. So, okay, I'll do a budget, the second, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye. We stand in recess until next Tuesday, five o'clock. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, all right, you go, everybody.